Call order at 6:11 PM April 6th. Portson Harbor Commission Regular Meeting. And Mr. Hill, if you would please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you take care of real call, please?
Mr. Hill?
Present.
Mr. Morrison? Absent. Ms. Yelburton?
Present.
And Mr. Goldstein?
Here.
And Chair Olssneck?
Here.
You have a quorum.
And then for citizen comments, just, yeah, I'll go to direct the signed sheet to make sure.
Okay, so we'll check for any citizen comments. Is there anybody in the audience or anybody signed in? All right, no citizen comments, so move on to approval of agenda and consent agenda. Does anybody want to make a motion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Would I make a motion to approve the agenda and the consent agenda from the Port Harbor Commission meeting April 6th, 2023? Say.
I can do it. You could say any discussion.
Any discussion?
Hearing none, voting on tonight's agenda and consent agenda. Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. ... Ms. Yelburton?
Yes.
And Chair Olssneck? The agenda and the consent agenda have passed and approved. On tonight's consent agenda is the approval of June 2nd, 2022 meeting minutes and the approval of the November 3rd, 2022 meeting minutes.
Okay. Mr. Bender's not here because of a certificate of appreciation because I forgot to write it in, but...
Let me just mention it and move on. For presentations and reports, there is a certificate of appreciation for Stephen Bender for his participation in Port Harbor Commission for five years. Stephen is not present tonight, so we'll find another time to present that to him. Chair report. I just have a couple of things. I don't have much to report, but the Port Harbor Commission had a work session last month and met with Holly and gave Holly some pretty detailed suggestions on Title 12 revisions, revisions. We heard back from Holly that she was not ready with those revisions for our work session again tonight, so we'll wait to hear from her. We have two open seats to fill, I believe, so I think that'll be, maybe that's a little bit later in the agenda, but we're looking for folks to join our party. And then some goals or priorities for this commission, I think. I was just going to add that I think we're pretty anxious to wrap up Title 12 revisions and get that to council for, get it submitted to council for approval. That's all I got. Is there a vice chair report today?
No.
And then moving on to harbor master report.
All right. Got a lot of stuff to pass on. We finally got our crane back and between Deputy Harbor Master and Public Works, we hope to have that up and running in the next week or so. Steps are right now to get it stuck back on the mount and then get the arm installed and do all that work. The big thing is then getting it properly connected to the deck with some welding that needs to be done, so we've got to outsource that. We also then need to do a weight test on it, so we hope to have it up and running in about two weeks' time, if not sooner. That's kind of the long, that's kind of the long result, long estimate. We're pretty much done with our snow rule, finally, I hope, keeping our fingers crossed. Prepping up for shrimp season, start seeing more of that. I spent a week in Kodiak last week doing some tsunami training that was really good stuff. That was a bunch of different state response folks and I think we're, same time we did a tsunami drill statewide, which had mixed reviews statewide on how that actually operated. The good news is while the test may not have tested out as well as it had, had it been the real thing, that button would have worked 100%. That's what they're telling us, so we'll have to take their, take their word and we're going to continue to just monitor our system. Our system works. The siren didn't go off, but our computer said it worked and so that's good. And that seems to be the situation throughout the state was everybody's councils, councils worked, but not all the sirens went off for whatever reason. But we got green across the board on our, on our, our system here. Title 12, we already talked about. I do want to talk a little bit about the harbor, the harbor municipal grant program. You know, guys, a couple of months ago, I went down south, February, I went down south and chatting with, with our representatives as part of Alaska Harbor Masters Association, tried to use lobbying for that money. As you guys know, we are a recipient of that grant if, if it's funded. I'm still not seeing it in the governor's budget, that line item. That's very concerning. It's an $8.2 million ask statewide. There's only three of us on the, that are, that are vying for that right now. And what my concern is if it's not budgeted this year, we will be going up against 12 to 15 harbors next year and that's going to put us, you know, it's just going to be that much more difficult. So we're going to have to really shoot for, you know, pressuring whoever whenever we can to try to get that back in the budget for 2024, so keep your eye on that. The fire in the dock, touch base on that real quick. I tried to send out as many emails and just keep everybody up to speed on a daily basis, but my hats off to Kevin Nelson and his crew from Black Duck Electric. They were down here the day after the fire, helped me do a lot of work to get the system repaired and back and operational, at least our building back and up and operational. He showed up Monday morning, ready to go to work and by Tuesday we had power on A, B, and C. Well, A, B and, A and B.
C took a day and a half.
Yeah, and then a day and a half later, we had power back up on C. It's all temporary at this point. The wire has been sourced and we should see it to make the permanent repair on Charlie float. We should be seeing that in about two weeks' time, so we're really lucky. You know, back last year when we had the fire on F float, it took us almost eight months to get power restored on that float, so, yeah, I mean, like I said, my hats off to Kevin and his crew for getting it done right, getting it done safely and just getting it back on in the throes of winter and the wind. So more to follow on that as we come along. I talked with Bill Harris, Harris Sand Gravel. We should have the East Boat Ramp floats sometime soon. They're, they're down south being produced, so, you know, just waiting for production. Got, been working with Chris about doing a seal bid auction for some items that we have down at Harbor. Right now it's the Safe Boat, the, our old Whaler skiff and the inflatables that are sitting on the trailer over by the city dock. Those, they, I don't know, I don't even know why we got them, but somebody gave them to us years ago as a great idea and then they sat and sat and sat, so anyway, we'll have to do a, we're going to put that forth via a resolution to the city council this next meeting and then we'll be starting that seal bid process, so. We will have a reserve on the 25 or in the Safe Boat, but I, and obviously I'm not going to share that with the public at this point, so it kind of defeats the idea of a, of a reserve. Been really involved with tourism best management practices, as many of you sitting on the board here have been as well. Businesses are starting to turn on, you know, ask for water and services to get turned on. We're going to get the cardboard recycling bin here in the next day or two. I've got Pacific Power coming down to work on the emergency generator, hasn't been serviced in quite some time, so after this last fire, we had some, we had a couple of things, just kind of freak out on it and we, it's working now, it's okay. The guy came down, gave us a clean bill of health, but we've got a couple of sensors that are, that are bad, just need to be replaced, but it doesn't affect the operation of the unit now, so we'll have, should have it done. As part of our CIP projects, some of the things that we've been knocking out, the long dock on mass light is, is, the parts have been ordered, so we hope to have those LED lights before the meat of the season. We're getting the new power panel installed in the, in our server room, so we don't have 25 outlets on one breaker, so that'll be a little bit of a safety item. That'd be a nice, nice repair. What else do we got going on? About the only thing that I've got on that list is, next is sidewalks around the east and west end of the harbor and getting rid of the boardwalk. Jim signed a land use permit for a concrete, a concrete plant to be assembled at the head of the bay on the Tank Farm property and that'll be here all summer and we hope to take advantage of localized concrete in town for not only sidewalks, if we can swing it, but also some type of repair on our Speedy Scope launch ramp. And I've hired a couple of seasonal guys that have done concrete work in the past, so they're very knowledgeable on that, so we might be able to take advantage of that as well. Training wise, Kyle passes ICS 300 course this last month, so we look to him for that and, yeah, I think that's about it, unless anybody's got any questions.
One question on the, the east ramp float. Is that repair including electrical, just because since it wasn't mentioned?
Yes, it will, it's going to replace the entire electrical run and trying to swing LED lights, get rid of sodiums, go with some LED with some motion sensors, but that's going to be a hat on, so.
Great, thanks. Mr. Goldstein?
Through the chair to the harbor master, there's just two quick questions here. On the tsunami test, did the NOAA's radio alarm and also did anybody pick up an EAS alert, like on television or radio as a result of that?
I wasn't here for the drill. I was in Kodiak. I don't, I understand the NOAA's radio did alert, or the phone.
On the, on the alert, on the, on the NOAA's phone?
Yes.
Okay, but, but the NOAA's radio that, that the weather service puts out here?
I don't know. I, I don't know if it did or not. That I do not know. I've got one in my office and it didn't indicate, but I wasn't here to hear it, so. What was the other, the EIS?
EIS, Emergency Alert System, you know, you see those crawlers on TV?
I, I wasn't here.
For a thunderstorm.
I, I'm not certain it did or not. I wasn't here for that.
So nobody knows?
And nobody's mentioned it to me, yeah.
Also, just at the council meeting, I think one of the things that I was a little surprised on, and maybe Shelby, you can clarify that, there was a, one of the counselors requested minutes on the Port Harbor Commission meeting and I thought that they normally got those.
I would gladly speak to that. So we've had lots of work sessions, lots and lots of work sessions in the past months and as you see on tonight's agenda, you have two meetings to approve. So now that those meetings are approved, I will absolutely put them in the next meeting's packet, but without having a regular meeting, it's hard to have something to put in the packet, so. But I will say that Mr. Chair and I are working on a report that he can put in the packet, especially for those months that we don't have a regular meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah, just to clarify on that, we intend, we, it seems like reports have not been provided by Port Harbor Commission for maybe some amount of time. We don't know, but we're going to fix that, so they'll always have a report in each meeting. And then I skipped over a question, back to Mr. Goldstein's comment about the tsunami thing, and only saying this, I guess, to have on record that I think we should be concerned that no community has received siren alarms. Is there, do they have an explanation for that? You don't need to go into detail, but my mind goes to, we should certainly ask a question so at least we get an answer. Oh, somebody didn't flip the blue switch? Next time they'll get switched.
I can attest to what I read in the paper after the test and Dave Snyder said, from the tsunami warning center here in the state in Palmer, he stated that there was a handful of communities where that, where it didn't work. Many of Kodiak, it sounded loud, so, yeah, I think it's just a, it might be a localized issue.
So I guess a suggestion would be maybe we revisit it at some point and make sure that it's functioning?
That, that's the plan.
Okay.
And that's the, I mean, I think that was even in the newspaper, the article that he was commenting on is the test button didn't work, but if it had been the real thing and they hit the, the real thing button, it would have worked as advertised, which
Okay.
Kind of baffles me as well, so, right? They're the professionals.
Yeah.
You know, I will say that we're, we're pretty fortunate to have a small community that already, for the most part, lives outside of the inundation zone. Yeah, I was, I was there in that training with a lot of communities that in the 64th earthquake were completely decimated, so it was really interesting to listen to their, their small community, how they put their plans together. Some of them have Connex boxes up on hills, high away from the inundation zones that they have and they already have the families part of, when they come to the community, they have go bags already stored in those areas for up to three to four, you know, days or whatever the case may be and every six months, they all gather up there, they do a drill and they go through their go bags to make sure everything's in good order, so that's, it's really interesting that, how they've kind of adapted to not having a lot of opportunity to, you know, so, that was some good stuff.
Mr. Hill?
Yeah, so talking about tsunamis or just natural disasters, you know, early warning is obviously very important, but I was just curious, is there any requirements from your standpoint or federal or state or, you know, after tsunami, like a, it's not a type of readiness plan or a procedure you have in place post-natural disaster?
Yeah, thanks for that question. So we have a hazard mitigation plan in place, HMP, that was just approved by FEMA and just approved by the city council. We, Jim and I and Andre and the other administrators spent, you know, about six months kind of putting this thing together. It's funded by FEMA, hadn't been done in many years here. I think the last time it was done, it was '05, so we put that together, we sent it forth to the council back.
July, June, and 20?
July, yeah, thank you.
I recall, I recall something about that, I just didn't know.
So we approved it and then FEMA, you know, so that being said, we have that as a guideline, you know, kind of first steps, right? We also have what we call a SCIRP that we developed, which is a Small Community Emergency Response Plan. Instead of having a, an emergency response plan that comes in a six-inch binder that requires, you know, 75 people in a city to stand up, because we are so limited, the state came out with this, this SCIRP, Small Community Emergency Response Plan. And it assigns positions to certain people and it kind of defines a small community's efforts to respond post-incident, pre-incident, post-incident, you know, and all those different things. It goes over, a lot of times it's just simply notifying how we notify people and how we stand up or how we're going to deal with a mass casualty. We're not going to be, you know, who are we going to call? And it's very helpful in mapping all that out for us because, you know, when it, when it hits the fan, think about a cruise ship incident, you know? We can't handle that as a community our size, but that SCIRP will guide us through who to call, who's going to get here first. So my, I think my concern tsunami-wise, you know, as a small community, we're really well set and prepared, I think, for the most part, right? We're out of the zone. I think long-term, if it's an earthquake that affects South Central, it's going to be a while for us to get help, so we're going to have to be self-sufficient for a while and I think that's the important part, to let folks in this town know that, you know, if it's a localized event, bear your arm, let's go, and something bad happens here, worse than they, than they think is going to happen, we're going to have help here in minutes, right? We're going to have more help and we're going to know what to do with, but if it's something like a big earthquake, we are going to be struggling, you know? So I think it's important for the community to know that and be prepared for it.
Absolutely. One more while I got you. Your concerns about the budget and it not being a line item in the governor's, do we have anybody besides, you know, yourself or possibly Jim, that's lobbying, you know, or working on that?
We most certainly do.
Okay, good.
And as I was speaking last night, I got a text saying it's not off, it's not off the board yet.
Yeah, I was just wondering who's out there advocating for, for us, you know, besides...
You can call your representative.
Yeah.
You know, you can absolutely do that and start calling and saying, hey, you know, we are, we are in dire need of getting these, these floats repaired. I know our, you know, I know our harbor master came down and spoke with you and, you know, this needs to happen, you know, we need to do this. I'll be honest with you guys, if we don't get this stuff repaired in the next two years, I'm going to have to shut those docks down. Those floats are going to be turned off.
I know Mr. Goldstein has a question, but as a side to your question, Trey, can the, I have no idea, so this is maybe going to sound real elementary, but can the commission make a statement or a request as you guys are there lobbying and we're a different, separate body and we know this is an issue? Is there something that we could do as a, as this body separately officially to ask?
Go ahead.
Okay, I'll speak to that. What I've seen historically is that commissions have done resolutions in support of X, Y, Z, so maybe in this case, and the Port Harbor Advisory Commission is in support of the Harbor Municipal Grant funding for the Alaska State Legislature, blah, 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 blah. So that's something that we could do.
And, and that's something I brought forth to the commission, to the council in January, I believe, as part of AHPA, asking for the, for the city council to support the Harbor Municipal Grant Program, you know, and AHPA and our efforts to, to protect that line item. So that's been done, but I don't see why, I mean, can't hurt to do it again?
Well, yeah, I guess my question is, is it, is it too tall of an ask or does it, is it like, I don't know anything about that sort of stuff, so is it like faux pas for us to do that? It's like, of course they support that, so that's redundant, but if it's more, more people on a, on an organized body that are asking for something, and if, if that's the case, then I would certainly suggest that we would put together a resolution and bring it forward quickly so we could ask that same question while also encouraging folks to reach out to their representatives.
I don't see why not. I don't, I don't see how it would hurt.
I agree, right?
Does anybody in the room see why that would hurt?
My feeling is it should be done. Remember that also, just if you want to do it individually or representatives or Kathy?
Sorry.
Please.
Just sort of local representatives for everyone to remember, Kathy Leesel and Maggie Shaw would be good people to contact, but I think a strongly worded resolution from the Port Harbor Commission, talking about the dire need and the fact that we might have to shut those ramps up, I'm not sure, I don't remember what the resolution from council looked like, I think it was just in support, maybe something that's a little more urgent, just strongly worded would, would be helpful, I think.
Well, we certainly, I mean, I don't know about the rest of the commissioners, but I certainly hear from the, the voting community a lot about the concern. It's not like every once in a while I hear the comment, it's a lot, so I think, yeah, well worded. We could be, I mean, I'm sitting here, you guys know how I like to speak, I don't see any reason why it couldn't be a little bit more firm.
Yeah, and stating, stating the fact that we support not just the city of Woodhere, but basically South Central Alaska, right? Everyone from, you know, the valley all the way down to 90 minutes long, use the ports here, the harbor here and that these are not only in need of repair, but they are dangerous to use right now and we definitely need, so something along those lines, I think, we need to put through.
My last comment on that is there a timeframe, like if we wait till the next scheduled meeting, are we too late with a resolution or should we move more quickly?
They're working on the budget as we speak, so, yeah. I think it's worth noting as well that we're, you know, we're number two on the list, right, to, to get this funding, so that's important as well. Like this is the best shot we've got that we're going to have in the next five years to get this done, so.
All I can think to say is load the guns then.
Shelby, is that something you could work together with finance director and city manager to put together a resolution?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if you need a, you probably don't need a consensus or a, a motion from the Port Harbor Commission to do that, just probably a good head nod from the council here at the DRC.
Do you have to have a sponsor, right, of a resolution? Sponsor?
Not necessarily, not like this. With your obvious consensus to doing this, then I can easily work with administration and write up a resolution, but typically that would come back before you and then you would vote on it whether or not you support it and it would come from administration in that case.
So then my next question, if we're fast-tracking this, how soon could you write the resolution and then how soon is everybody, you, you two are around a lot, right? You're a little bit, you're around a lot, but you're moving around and then, so how soon can everybody, what's the, what's realistic so that we aren't, we're not doing this for nothing, I guess, is my point.
I mean, I could have a resolution probably written by lunch tomorrow if you wanted. Is that...
I'll be here at lunch. Will you be?
I'll be here at lunch. Yeah. No? Also, it has to be 24-hour notice of a meeting, so can't be at lunch tomorrow, sorry. Could be at this time tomorrow or later than this time tomorrow.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
No, I got meetings out of town.
But we only need four, so you're gone?
Yeah.
Tomorrow night?
Tomorrow night, I could do it.
Yeah, but I can't too.
When are you coming back?
I, well, I'm...
No?
I'll be in sewer.
Well, let's get it written and then we can worry about, we can maybe do, yeah, we could do something after asking for a schedule, but I think it's probably pretty feasible to get everybody back together before a month goes by.
I don't know if the other thing we could do is put together a resolution, have it sponsored by Port and Harbor, I don't know if this is kosher, and then submit it to the city council. I'm putting together their packets for their meeting tomorrow, so if I do it and put it in their packet for their meeting on the 18th, I don't know if that's too late too.
Could be a great backup plan if we can't put together fast. Mr. Goldstein?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one comment on this. I don't think anybody's going to be against a resolution to get funding for the, for an improvement in the harbor, so maybe we could go ahead and take a motion to, to sponsor or to create and, and approve, let me think how we can move this, but basically we support a resolution coming from the Port and Harbor Commission to access funds for rebuilding of the eastern part of the harbor and then also maybe in the motion, we could just send an email out so that you have confirmation, yes, we approve this if you need that, or we just approve it, you send it out, we look at it, if anybody has any comments, then it goes back. I, as I say, I don't think anybody would be against that. I can't imagine.
Through the chair. I can do that and I'll work with the administration just to make sure that I'm doing it properly and we'll, we'll figure out something. I will be out next week, so I'll do as much as I can through Friday.
I would be very comfortable with our, our chair speaking for the, for me and he, he has my affirmative vote.
So do we, to your suggestion, make a motion tonight to, to do that?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So what I've got so far is a motion to sponsor a resolution to support funding the Harbor Municipal Grant in general, right? Because we want, we want to show that we support all Harbor Municipal funding.
Yeah, we probably want to say the, the 2024 ask is $8.2 million.
Specifically, just call it up.
The way, way this works is if they just fund a million and there's no programs on there, they just carry it over to the next year. If they, if they do four million, the first one's a million, our ask is four and a half, the next one's three, they'll skip by us and they'll take care of the third one. They'll only fund what they can fully fund, so if we ask for the total... They'll only fund what they can fully fund, so if we ask for the total, then.
So our resolution should be in support of the full funding of the Harbor Municipal Grant.
Full ask, which is 8.2.
For 2024.
Correct.
And then stressing health and safety.
Oh, yeah, heavily. For all of South Central.
Yeah, the, the other, other question that I had just kind of in, in relation to this, uh, the federal infrastructure bill basically was designed to take care of roads and bridges and, uh, rail systems that have failed, and is that an avenue that we can pursue, um, coincidentally with this?
Cordova got 20 million out of that, so it must be. Um, I don't know how we would compete, so that's a whole different.
And this, this, this may be one of these programs that has to go from the feds to the state and then the state to the city? We actually have.
Well, and it's interesting that you mentioned that because, you know, the state got a lot of infrastructure money.
Yeah.
And I was kind of, I made the assumption that we would see that filtered into infrastructure, i.e., you know.
Yeah.
Harbor's municipal rent programs for, for infrastructure, but, um, I, I, I'm just not in with that finance crowd as much as, you know, I'm a harbor master.
Okay, one, one other thing that I, I just wanted to ask you, getting back to the hazard mitigation plan, um, that is probably based on the 2005 version, where did it use some of the stuff that was in that and then build on that? Because that covered everything, it covered weather, it covered tsunamis, it covered earthquakes, it covered, uh, mass casualty, uh, type of, uh, events.
We've been adding climate change this time.
Good, 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 and, and, and the other question is, is that available on the city website? Great, thank you so much.
Mr. Morrison?
Yeah, I just wanna point out that, uh, we, we've been recently reading proportion of floors or district, um, our representative, Larry Shaw, is not real familiar with the league, or I don't know about Kathy, is that her name?
Kathy.
Maybe either one of them, but, uh, I was hoping to value a little bit, and he needs more information, I don't believe it.
Sat in his office for about 30 minutes chatting with him, him and Kathy both, so.
Okay.
Yeah, hopefully that, hopefully that helped.
Any other questions or comments on Harbor Master Report?
Had one other thing I was gonna add, Mulligan, um, during our, the council meeting Tuesday, I've mentioned the things that we're auctioning, and it seems like a thing to add to the list to auction off would be the travel lift, so I'm gonna do that. It will not be operated off our dock, because that's why I'm getting rid of it, but just to let you know.
Okay, procedurally, Mr. Goldstein, did you make a motion?
Procedu- procedurally, yes.
Okay, so what I've got for the motion, the wording of it is a motion to sponsor a resolution to support funding for the total FY 2024 Harbor Municipal Grant of $8.2 million, stressing the health and safety of all harbors. Yes? Awesome, do I have a second?
I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, voting on the motion to support a resolution to support funding for the total FY 2024 Harbor Municipal Grant of $8.2 million, stressing the health and safety of all harbors. Mr. Goldstein?
Yes.
Ms. Yelvertin?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
You.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Olsmack?
Yes.
That motion is passed and approved.
On the new business?
On to new business.
Uh, go right, straight to, uh, number three, Harbor Area Waste Management, Jim Morrison, you have a presentation? I believe.
I can't hear you.
You have a, your, uh, wait, Harbor Area Waste Management presentation?
Well, I think it's already, uh, it's there for, uh.
I guess just a discussion.
If there's a possibility, uh.
So then I suppose, yes, I have read it, I don't know if everybody else has had a chance to, but then is there, I guess the question is, is there any discussion on the topic? Or did you wanna make some comments so we could have some questions for you?
Uh, well, you were looking for thinking outside of, uh, judicial review and also waste management, so, uh, you might go somewhere, I'm off on the price of the manager in that discussion, that's considerably less, but, but 45 cents per bag printed, so, uh, it's kind of a stretch of imagination, but.
So, um, Mr. Harbinger, have you reviewed Jim's plan or idea?
I have, yes, uh, I've read it over several times, um, I think, and, you know, like I said, I'm open to any suggestions, um, I think one of the, the, we, we basically kicked our trash off to council to kind of come up with a plan, and I'm not certain where we've really fallen with the plan, other than the fact that we will continue to pay a hundred-plus thousand dollars a year to take care of commercial trash in the harbor area, um, so that's where we are right now.
I don't see any problem passing this on without, if you think it's worth it, if everyone does.
I don't even know if it's gonna be a topic of discussion anytime soon with the council, so, um.
And the reason I asked you specifically, I wasn't trying to put you on the spot, and I read it and, and Jim and I talked about it a little bit in previous months, my biggest concern was enforcement, whoever got, whoever got a plan like this, how, like, I think it's very creative, first of all, thank you for presenting it, but my, my question is, how realistic would it be to, to implement a plan like that from an enforcement standpoint?
It'd be pretty difficult, um, it really would, um, there's been some different enforcement options discussed down there already, and they all involve, um, employee, employee power, manpower to be there, and I just, we don't have it, you know, and that's something that, that we would have to have 24/7, and I just, you know, we can't lock the dumpsters, we all know that, if we lock them up at night, they're gonna end up with trash everywhere and even more trash, you know, birds and bears and everything else, so that's not an option, um, it, you know, shy of putting the cameras in, and now that we've got the cameras, I can tell you who's dumping trash when, um, and, you know, I can always follow up down the road with that, um, I, it is just, it's, it's a lot of energy, it really is.
Uh, there's one aspect to that, um, proposal, that I think could be possibly implemented, uh, without much cost and manpower, is, um, attaching, maybe not attaching, I don't know, somehow maybe attaching to focus on, uh, what, um, voters intend to do and how they intend to handle their trash.
And that would work fine if I've got, if I get that, you know, but there's no requirement for anybody to even file a flow plan, so.
Right.
You know, I think we'd go down the same road of just, I'd get 10% of the people applying by the rules, everybody else, you know, I will say this, you know, we make incremental changes, and we made a change to how we collect for oil, right, it used to be we had, you know, people had to pay to get rid of, of, you know, five-gallon pail of oil, I did away with that fee and we haven't had any oil in our dumpsters anymore, so, you know, those are those little incremental changes that we do make, and sometimes it does make a big difference, um, and, you know, we don't have oil being left on the docks anymore, which is nice, um, it's not getting thrown in dumpsters anymore, which is a major bonus, um, but I, you know, I think, at the end of the day, the answer is gonna be, we just pay? Or, this is my other thought, we come up with a fee, an environmental fee, that we charge the harp, that we charge the voters, the problem with that is that that's gonna make up some of our money, um, again, the commercial businesses that are operating in the waterfront are getting a free pass, they're paying nothing, now they're not even, now I don't think they're paying anything, last year at least we were getting $275 per lease, one-time fee, and they were getting $75 a month, now we're not getting anything because that was removed off our, off our fee schedules, so now we're not getting anything. Last year we made about $25,000, which is good, I mean, that's better than nothing, we got something, um, way better than what we had in the past, but again, if I, if I had an environmental fee or harbor patrons that are putting the boats in the water, again, they're, you know, businesses are getting a free ride, and I just, I have a hard time stomach in that, so, thank you.
So I guess in conclusion that, again, this, this garbage thing's been kicked to council and that's where it sits.
That's where she sits.
So I'll just say, Jim, thanks for the creativity, I think we should leave it with them for now, that's my suggestion, I don't know how we handle this, but I think we just, you know, so for our, our commission to move on to other topics in the future, I think it's great, I appreciate you coming up with it, but I think we have to leave it in.
Council fans agree.
Uh, moving on to item four, oh, I guess any other comments or discussion on that topic? Okay, here now, we'll move on to item four, uh, 2023, 2024 Commission Priorities. I'm gonna look at you because.
Okay.
I know we have last year's example, but we haven't set them yet.
Yeah.
2023, 24.
So, um, I'll just, I'll explain why I put it in there, um, so, last year, the Port and Harbor Advisory Commission met with, uh, council and planning and zoning for a joint work session according to this, uh, resolution, last year to discuss priorities, and so then after that, both the Planning and Zoning Commission and Port and Harbor Commission had these priorities, resolutions, um, this resolution only goes from April 2022 to April 2023, and it's April 2023, so, um, I'm bringing it forward to you today as a discussion item, just to discuss, um, if you'd like to create another resolution of priorities for this fall, this coming 2023 to 2024 year, and if so, how do you want it to look? Do you want the same things on here, did we progress and we can take some of them off, is there anything that you want to add? Those sorts of things.
Uh, I, I guess my suggestion would be that we do something similar for, for this year, uh, and I, and looking at our short, medium-term goals, luckily it did say they were six to 24 months because none of them have been completed yet, though a lot of work has been done in, in between, and I do, I do think that working with planning and zoning and also our work with HALLI, that 12, Title 12 and 17, probably we'll see at least submissions to council this year, whether they're, whether that's adopted or approved is a totally other story, but I do think that we'll get there, so, um, uh, that's the topic one, then, uh, topic two, review, um, Harbor Phase Three project, they didn't really talk about that much throughout the year because we were so focused on 12 and 17, I mean, I know there was some discussion on it, do you have a, do you have a comment on that, Dave?
Uh.
In, in this, in the turn, in terms of making, this commission making recommendations for Phase Three?
Well, Phase Three is what the Harbor Municipal Grant is gonna pay for if we get it, so that's Phase Three.
So then I guess we could add, we could update that line item with a resolution to support the Harbor Municipal Grant?
Correct.
Um, number three, did we have any progress on harbor tariff and city code, besides going back to Title 12 and 17, it's kind of a redundant.
Yeah, I agree.
Maybe just.
It's always a work in progress.
But it's, it's, doesn't it relate kind of to hard, to, to Title 12 and 17 anyway?
It does, so we also update the, you know, tariff every year, you know?
And that was done, I mean, that, you accomplished that, okay. Um, four, identified needed support strategies and sets and measures that will support the Harbor District Industries, I don't know that we specifically broke off and addressed that at all throughout the year.
The hiatus didn't help.
Um, are there, is there, on item four, does any, do any of the commissioners have any input on that, is there any, you know, speaking to that, identified needed support strategies, incentives and measures that will help support Harbor District Industries, is there anything that you feel we could do in the coming year to address that?
We, we did address it with, you know, our, our capital improvement plan that we came up with and presented to, to, uh, council, and, you know, as part of that number four, we are, you know, knocking those projects off as we speak, so that, that's in play, and, you know, we can always update that.
Yeah, I guess a good point, can we update the 2023, 2024 to reflect what was done in the, uh, capital plan? Okay. I, I think the same thing kind of applies to five and six, really, there's, there's no real call to action on any of these, there.
This is all very.
Pretty vague.
You know, we, let's think about the things that we've done over the last year, uh, and automation, like with our showers, you know, making those available 24/7 instead of just during working hours, you know, with the token machine, um, we talked about, you know, our new, our new sewer car pump out, uh, the new restrooms that we put in and, you know, that we're maintaining in the, in the Harbor District, um, the parking lot expansion and, you know, restriping, and all those things that, you know, we just do it and nobody really thinks about that as improvements, right?
Sure.
So, you know, sometimes we get, things get lost in the fog, but we, we've accomplished a lot in the last couple of years, you know, with improvements down there in Harbor, so.
So then five and six, honestly, could, they could remain, you said vague here, or did you say vague, I think?
Broad.
Broad, they could remain there because we are continuing to provide those recommendations as needed to, to drive those measures too, I suppose, so then specifically we could, as we just discussed, we could update one through four with what we talked about, and leave five and six, and then I go back to, does anybody else have any input on any of those topics that I might have missed? I guess I ask any discussion.
Yeah, this is all of this is.
Okay, here it comes. So keep, uh, I guess. I should probably turn around and look at you, Mr. Goldstein.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, most of this, uh, I think is in this, uh, two-year, it looks like, two-year project or planning, I think, so I, I, I think we could just basically change the dates on this and.
And update it.
This for the next one, and then if we have changes on this, we can address those as needed, this thing doesn't sit on a shelf for 12 months without looking at it, look at it every once in a while.
Yeah, it'd be nice.
Yeah, and then change it as it's needed.
Once a quarter maybe.
Yeah.
Quarterly review.
And the comprehensive plan, that's, I'm not sure what our next comprehensive plan review is, or formal one, I know we're probably looking at that periodically too.
I think coming up on our.
Five-year?
For the city?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, as far as a harbor?
Yeah.
I think it speaks, I think that the point of that was the city plan, I think that's the point it was, uh, so then do we need to do anything to have all what we just discussed updated or just discussion good enough?
I'm probably stepping outside my clerk role right this second, but I just wanna ask the commission, these 12, six to 24-month goals, um, or priorities, I'm sorry, not goals, priorities, um, do they all feel appropriate, or are some of them fluffy and not, not exactly what you would classify as, um, the commission's priorities right now? Um, they all sound great, but, and the other thing I wanted to throw out there too is, um, as part of code, you have duties listed for the Port and Harbor Commission, so I just wanna, if I may, briefly summarize what the duties are in the code, so one of them is to make recommendations to city council, um, about. So one of them is to make recommendations to city council, um, about the harbor facilities, when requested by the city council or the city manager, or as otherwise required. Um, so that you do, whenever someone brings something to you, then you give recommendations, right? That's great. Uh, the next one is review and make recommendations on all contracts regarding port and harbor facilities. Um, so I'm not sure how many contracts we have. Oh, sorry, you have a face. Um, and so it's just that you make recommendations on the contracts and submit a written report to city council periodically, and at least once per year, updating the city council on all contracts involving port and harbor facilities that were or are subject to council approval. So that's not in your priorities, um, not explicitly anyways, but per code, it, it is. Yeah.
Can I speak to that, then?
Yeah.
So then, as you asked the question, where my mind went to was some of these fluffier ones at the end, five and six, that are just kind of general, sort of general things. If we haven't addressed that in some time, maybe we should remove one of those and make a priority to review contracts in our next meeting. If, whatever those might be, or just discuss what they could be and what input we could even provide. I don't know that, I don't know that it'd provide a lot of benefit to spend a whole bunch of time in the weeds on it because I don't know that it would be heard anywhere. But at least if we had it as an agenda item, and we had a list of whatever contracts affected the harbor, and maybe we could cherry pick a couple that might need addressing. Maybe, Dave, you could, um, point us to the direction of some that could use some input. Maybe there's been some questions on, or have been left aside for however long, whatever. I don't, I don't even know what those contracts include or involve, but that would certainly be a more pointed, less, uh, broad topic for us to focus in on.
No.
Um, oh, sorry.
I'd like to also throw this out as a short, medium-term goal, if I could add, make some input. Um, improve our public voter outreach, uh, because right now, I feel like we're a party of six, and we make decisions with very little input from our voting public. And I would certainly like to try to figure out a way to improve that outreach and get more, more input.
I, I love that because I've, uh, like you, I pay attention a little bit on social media, and I see the comments on, you know, how the city doesn't care, and they only want your money, and the such, and which is not true. And so we could find a way to, without just saying, somebody could be more involved in that. Maybe we make it a priority to come up with a plan to address the public's concerns or listen to the public's concerns. Maybe that's, maybe we get rid of five and six and we add this contracts thing, and we put, we also add in, um, establish a method of communicating with, with the public from the commission's standpoint, you know, so that we can bring community or, uh, by community, I mean, local, but also the voting community, who 99% of doesn't reside here, but certainly has an opinion on how terrible it may be or how good it may be. Um, maybe we could have a, we could develop a strategy that addresses that as a priority.
I would like that very much.
Okay, there's one more, well, two more, two more duties in the code. So the next one is to review the fee chart essentially, and to make recommendations on it, which you do. It's not in here. I don't know if you want it in the priorities, or if you all are pretty confident that it's...
It is, though. Uh, three, provide recommended changes to harbor tariff and city end code.
Uh, excuse me. Yes.
Or do you wanna be more specific? Is that what you're getting at?
I have to think about that one. I'm, in the past, this year it was introduced as an ordinance, but in the past, it's always been introduced as a resolution the fee schedule has, so...
And that was the wrong way to do it, right?
In the past.
The resolution.
The resolution.
The resolution.
It was had, yeah, I think it was recommended to be done as an ordinance.
Okay.
I'll tell you why there.
Yeah, yeah. I have a feeling encoded says resolution, though. It's just a work in progress. Um, okay, then finally, the last one is, uh, periodically review the budget capital improvement programs and the funding of port, port and harbor facilities, and report your findings to council, which I feel like probably you have covered in here.
We have covered it, but we haven't reported to council.
But you haven't reported, that's fair.
And I think we have a plan for that.
Awesome.
Any other discussion on any of the new business items? Hearing, oh, sorry.
Just to, just to confirm, the continuing ones, which we haven't talked about, are we, are you happy with those ones? The continuing priorities?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Harbor Master is happy with this.
I think they're appropriate.
I agree.
I suppose my final question on that is just how, um, as city clerk, how can I support you, the commission, in maintaining progress towards those goals? I mean, we talked about quarterly reviewing this, so is that, um, I mean, do you want me to put a copy of this in the packet quarterly, or ha, make a sort of progress sheet or something?
All I can think of to say is hold us accountable, like, when we're, when we go, when you, we do the meeting notes for these official, actual meetings, the few that we have, hopefully more, um, communicate with us on, maybe a reminder of what we said we would accomplish next, and just put it on our agenda so that then when we approve our agenda and consent agenda, we're forced into making sure we review it.
Okay.
Is that, Dave?
That would work, I think, though.
And I guess what I mean by that is...
You know, make it, you know...
Making sure it ends up on the agenda.
Well, as the, as the pres, you should track that, say, hey, we're coming up on six months. Can we add it as, even if we just put it on consent, right? Because that is there, and it triggers it, and if one, somebody says, oh, let's pull that off of consent because I don't wanna talk about it, right? We can do that.
Just to clarify, what kind of things are you...
Talking about the comprehensive plan, you could add that, too.
Like each one of the priorities, just add?
No, just the entire review of it? Is that what we're talking about? So put that resolution on as a consent, and if somebody wants to add to it, or, you know, we can pull it off consent, and we can talk about it, and then we can say we reviewed it at least every six months.
Right.
Is that...
I think, um, just because we don't wanna approve, reapprove the resolution every three months, maybe I could just put it as new business, as it was today, so there'd be opportunity for discussion.
Right.
If there's no discussion, there's no discussion, but it's on there.
It's, to, to remind us to talk, yeah, good, that's a great point. I think that's great.
Well, what were we talking about earlier? Not the comprehensive plan, right? It wasn't, it was to review something quarterly. It was numbers, reports, contracts.
Oh.
Something like that, wasn't it?
The contracts is yearly, um...
Okay, wasn't that there?
That they want you to review, just the priorities in general?
I'll think about it. I don't think that was it.
Or the capital improvement plan, like the harvest portion of the capital improvement plan, is that...
Could have been. I don't think it was to review the comprehensive plan quarterly when I sent that out. I thought it was some kind of...
No, I, I thought we were just talking about our priorities, right? Just reviewing our priorities every six months or so, and make sure that we're staying in track with what we told the council were our priorities.
Yeah, okay.
That we're looking at every six to 24 months.
And you, and to your point, putting in them on the consent agenda so that if they, if those priorities needed to be reviewed at that time, we could pull them off and review them. Is that what you're, what you're saying?
That's what I was saying, yeah.
Okay. I'm just saying that I, I agree with that. I think that that's a great, it's a great call out. It's on the consent agenda. Do you approve that, or do you not approve that? Do you wanna pull it out? I think that's great.
Let's not make it too hard.
Okay, perfect.
That's good.
Running again there.
Hard enough.
Yeah. Okay. Any other commission comments on any of that? Any other discussion? Hearing none, so then, uh, commission comments? Mr. Goldstein?
Yes, uh, thank you, Jim. Uh, Nick, uh, I think Jim had some comments. He was questioning the definition of harbor, and, and I'm not sure that I'm totally clear on this. Uh, when we, when we looked at Title 12, there's a lot of information in each of the communities, Title 12s and in ours, too, and I know you all worked on a lot of that. Uh, but I guess the question, or that if we could get some clarity on, how does the, uh, facility at the Head of the Bay now fit into, into the definition of our harbor? Is this private Huna Toto Norwegian Cruise Lines, is that considered part of the harbor? It's not really a city, uh, revenue source or a city responsibility? And I think Jim had some comments about, um, other areas here. Are they considered part of the harbor? What, what is, how far does our obligation go as far as harbor responsibility?
I, I think that's yet to be established, right? Isn't that what was happening in planning and zoning? Is I think planning and zoning is working on that currently. And so, in some of those work sessions we've, we've attended, I think that that's the plan, is to have a new map that says this is exactly that. I just, so I don't think we're there yet.
I, I would agree with that statement, but you also have to remember, it depends on what plan you're looking at. Like if it's the comprehensive waterfront plan...
Yeah.
And that includes part of our waterfront leases, then yes, they would be included. If you're talking about jurisdiction of the harbor and my, my port powers, no, right? So I think it just all depends on how you're, how we're speaking to different areas in the harbor. You know, like, Cliffside would be part of our waterfront comprehensive plan, right? We don't have any jurisdiction there, but they do lease from us. So, you know, there, there's just, just depends on what, what, what we're talking about at the moment.
Good. Mr. Martin?
Well, yeah, we're, we're reviewing the code, and I was just noticing that there are some things that could be moved. And I think the wording and the provision gives the clerk authority to move those items. Um, so one item in particular could be, uh, streets, because there, Title 12 includes the streets, harbor, and, uh, one other item, I believe. But I was wondering, do the streets and harbor need to be under the same title? Or could we separate them?
From the last work session that we had, Holly's suggestion was that we remove, that we remove all of Port and Harbor and make it its own title. So yes, it would be separate. Her suggestion was to separate it.
We're working on that now, aren't we?
Mm-hmm, we are. So Holly is, Holly's intent is to meet with administration and discuss Title 12 just to make sure that we're all moving on the same page together. And then once that meeting has been done, and Holly's gotten a chance to actually, like, massage the code, then she'll bring it back for another work session.
Okay, yeah, I think there's a lot of good information throughout the whole code. It could be a little better organized.
Holly agreed.
It's a mishmash.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring something up. So I was, uh, contacted by, uh, Dave Walker, who's part of the previous Whittier Boating, Boat Owners Association, right? And, uh, I think they may have reached out to you regarding cameras, that they're, they're, they have some funding leftover, um, from when they were strong years ago, and they want to, uh, you know, put up some live webcams and things around town to focus on Passage Canal and the harbor, and, and that's a great idea. And, you know, I actually lease an apartment from Da, Dave Walker, and he's thinking about putting a webcam up in the, in the apartment, you know, with some sort of live feed, and how do we get that out to the public? But it got me thinking about all the cameras that you've, you know, the harbor's recently installed. And so I guess there's two parts to what I'm thinking. For one, are we gonna get to a point where our harbor cameras have a live feed with like access via the city's website? Um, and then secondly, uh, did they reach out to you and ask you any questions about live feeds or webcams or anything, anything along those lines?
I have not talked to Mr. Walker, so I have not, no. Um, as far as our cameras go, uh, I have the cameras up, right? They, I have visual on them in, in my office. Um, as far as getting them out off, over the internet, um, I, I did an app-based program. Um, for some reason, that's not feeding out like it should, um, so, and it just needs, I need to do some fine tuning since we can, um, our contract will be back in May, so we'll take a look at it then, and hopefully we can get everything up and running. But winter was kind of tough on our, on our camera infrastructure.
Right.
I, you know, I kind of thought that might be the case.
Yeah.
As far as working on getting, getting them on the internet, I'm gonna have to work with our city clerk, who seems to be quite the tech whiz, uh, and see in how we can do that. We might not be able to do it with what we have. We might have to do something a little different. But, uh, yeah, I definitely think it's a great idea.
Yeah, right, okay. I think that's a great thing to add to our priority to help communicate the message, right? Having, if it's not all 16 cameras or whatever it is, if it's one. Something that I certainly see that being benefit lately is the, the harbor ramp update. I'm sure somebody in here is taking that picture and making sure it gets shared on the city's social media, which is, I think it's super important. That's never happened before, and that's like a huge step in the right direction. So something along those lines. That's, that tends to be the question, right? How's the conditions at the ramp? You know, so if there were one camera that went out to the public, that would be a great thing to add to our communication strategy, if possible.
Yeah, I, I totally, totally agree. I would love to be able to jump on the city website, get some kind of access, you know, launch ramp view or something like that. And that's what I was telling the, um, Dave Walker and the voters there, Cindy. And I don't know if there's some sort of partnership there or not, but I think, you know, my suggestion to them was to, you know, reach out, you know, via, you know, work together possibly, or not, or we can go solo.
Well, I don't know if we can accept their donation. Maybe somebody could make that connection. But if they've got fundage available to offer sponsoring, sponsoring a camera that's a live feed, maybe that's the way to approach that, or an idea or a possibility. Yeah, good for that. Mr. Goldstein?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, he's actually putting together a meeting, April 11th at 6:30, for some of the old Whittier boat owners, uh, members of the Whittier Boat Owners Association. I think there's some new people who are interested also, but I think his plan, there's a, I think a, a KDA of about $3,000 that's been sitting there for a lot of years, um, and the organization's pretty much become defunct. So they're trying to figure out what to do with the $3,000, and I think as Trey's pointed out, uh, I think one suggestion that Dave came up with is to put a camera outside of his unit over there, which would basically give people back in acreage or whoever an idea of what it was like out on the water here in Passage Canal, so they could make the decision whether to come down to Whittier or not.
Any other comments? Hearing none, moving on to citizen comments. Ms. Jamie Long?
Hello. Um, it's actually, it's not that, uh, huge of a deal right now, but we had our parks and rec meeting on Monday night, and we are doing a, this year, we're gonna do a week on Whittier cleanup. So it's gonna start on Mother's Day, the 14th of May, and continue throughout the week, and, and culminate May 20th, 9:00 AM, the Head of the Bay cleanup. Um, and Prince Williams Sound's Jurisdiction Foundation helps us with that. We do like a joint event. Um, it's usually just a couple hours, and then we do a cookout and a raffle. Um, we're just kind of letting the school and businesses and commissions and committees everybody know they wanna have a team together to collect and, you know, get together and choose a specific time or street you wanna take care of. Nothing super specific, just whatever anyone's like, ready and available to do. But that's what's going on in May, so 14th through the 20th.
Great, thank you.
Are you guys getting a dumpster by chance, like a 40-yard or 20-yard or anything big? I'll talk to this guy.
Yeah, I just talked to Shelby about that today, so I think she has the better answer than I do.
All right, cool.
Hey, do you have any questions about the, uh, the crane? What's the voltage down there, if you know?
Just runs a hydraulic pump, 120, 120 volt.
Oh, is that all of it? Okay, all right. I, really I asked it because I had heard that, uh, the crane... The reason I asked is because I had heard that the crane was bought, the original crane was purchased a while ago. It was a long voltage, but they figured out a way to put a transformer or something in there. I didn't know if that was part of the scheme now, but it sounds like it's much more simple than I thought. The other thing I wanted to ask about was the small community city response plan. Is that something that's completely handled by the administration? Remind me what the status is of that right now?
So, we completed it and we got it off to the state. The state guy left, new person came in. I just talked to him last week and he told us we're final edits and we're probably a month out from seeing it. But it's been a while.
And just out of curiosity, then, once that is implemented, then is it really totally a city administration function there? Whereas if, I'm just trying to think, how the community would be informed of that? Or does the community even need to know what? If there's a large earthquake, does everyone just call 911? Or is there a, I'm trying to think what the community could do?
Yeah, so the SCIRP is just a response guide for administrations, basically. It's like, this has happened, here's what you gotta do to kinda get in line with everything. So it's not really so much a community guideline as it is, you know...
You had mentioned that some of the other communities run drills. I guess that's what they think about. If that was something that we should start to think about, or does that coincide with the...
Very well, could.
Thanks.
Any other citizen comments?
Just a couple things. The City Council did recently pass an ordinance regarding trash, so it's a start. We did send out bills to leaseholders of city property and the new trash fee is $40 per month, starting, this year it'll start May 1st because we're required to give 30 days' notice prior to implementing a change in fees. It'll be $40 a month from, typically from April through September. And in that ordinance, council has progressively increased it annually. So it'll start at $40 a month and it'll go to $50 a month, all the way from $40 to $80 a month over time, with a $10 incremental increase annually. And that'll, as I said, be from April to September. We sent the bills out to the leaseholders of city property and somebody was supposed to get ahold of Dave to talk about whether that ordinance also applied to harbor-related businesses like it did last year. If you had a business license, you were operating on the water, does that fee apply to you? So he and I can talk about that. With regard to the surplus sale, the city code requires the City Council to pass a resolution authorizing disposal of surplus property. So we do have both a resolution and an ordinance going forward, council to get approval to surplus equipment. The resolution will allow us to surplus items that have a value of less than $35,000. The ordinance will include items above $35,000. There are two items on that list. One is the safe boat. So I just wanted to mention to folks, if you're interested in that, surplus sale will probably be held June-July timeframe because the ordinance requires an introduction at one meeting and then a hearing and adoption at the second meeting. So keep your eyes peeled if you're interested in that. We have heavy equipment from the boneyard that the city's finally going to be disposing of and getting it out of town. And that's, we budgeted $25,000 in 2023 to start cleaning up derelict vessels, vehicles, tigers, garbage. So if you have, if your group has any preferences or priorities for how you'd like to see that money spent, I think whoever jumps on it first would be the great plan on how to spend that money to dispose or junk in the community for beautification, have at it. And, oh, one more thing. With regard to the question of what is the harbor? Just from the financial standpoint, folks have asked me that question and this is not purely a financial answer, but enterprise funds are not something that we just create out of thin air and decide we're gonna have an enterprise fund. An enterprise fund can be created where you have a service that is being provided by the city that is going to be substantially supported with user fees. So if, for example, the head of the bay ever, ever was turned into some sort of an economic something that had its own revenue source, it could be a separate enterprise fund. It doesn't, it wouldn't have to be rolled into the harbor. Most likely wouldn't be rolled into the harbor unless there was harbor infrastructure up there. But it's a good question. It's been asked for a long time, what is the harbor? Because we have the campground at the head of the bay and, you know, the harbor staff administers that. It doesn't necessarily, I mean, that's more of a political decision. It doesn't have to be necessarily related to the harbor, so it's a good question. But from the standpoint of an enterprise fund, you wouldn't necessarily have to create something separate at the head of the bay. And if there is nothing created at the head of the bay, then it de facto is part of the general fund. So I don't know if that answers the question. Thanks.
Thank you, Chris. Any other citizen comments? Hearing none?
Commission and administration, response to comments?
Are there any commission and administration response to comments?
I do. I thank you, Chris, for straightening me out of the trash. Like I miss that completely. So at least we're getting a penance. Appreciate that. No, just in closing, I just like, thank you guys all for your service and I appreciate it.
Any other questions, comments?
Sorry, Nick, I just got here.
Yes, sir.
May I step up?
Yes, you may. Mr. Manny?
Sorry, you're tearing up over the park right now. Manuel Villaguest, I'm one of the captains of the harbor. I just had a concern that...
Hold on, will you push your button?
Sorry. Just a concern that in the future, like we had this event with the electrical fire a month ago or whatever. I wasn't back in town yet, but something to work together with kind of a contingency plan if something happens to like the main walkway down the ramp and some of us are coming home or whatever, we don't know if this has happened. You know, we could have a lot of people stuck on a dock, especially in the summer when it's busy. You know, we have access to the other ramp that was no longer in use. But something to where, you know, when people are coming and going, we have a contingency plan to get people on and off of the dock while the other parts being dealt with. It's just a, there's such foresight to it. If we have a situation occur that, you know, we're not putting people in kayaks or whatever to get them on and off the... Because I can see, you know, it happened on a windy, terrible day and then we had a really bad situation. So just something to think about coming into the future.
I think it's a great comment. I was, I happened to be there that day and I picked up my phone and called somebody who was walking towards the fire who didn't know the fire was there. I didn't even consider your comment because there was nobody else in the harbor, myself and that other person at the time. But had it been a busy day, I could see it being an issue. I don't know that we have a plan in place for that, but it's certainly worth a thought. Thank you for your comment.
I say inflatable too, and that's the way to do it.
Walmart.
Some of those airplane ones are...
Any other, any other citizen comments or commission responses to citizen comments? Hearing none? Looking for a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
On second.
Hopefully he wants to leave.
Adjourn that, 7:31 PM.
Adjourn at 7:30 PM, April 6th. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate you.